It's a great day in Kershaw County, an all-American county. The baseball playoffs begin at Lugolf here very shortly. And soccer starts at Lugolf and in Camden. So if you're watching out here on Facebook, why don't you go watch it from the ball field and get yourself a hot dog. We are now called to order. Mr. Gardner is recovering nicely, I'm happy to say. And we are now called to order with a quorum. I would ask you now to stand with me as we pray and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I recall to you that Psalm 33 where it says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." And I hope we've all had a blessed Easter and let him enter into our heart. Let us pray. Dear Lord, may the Lord be before us, beside us, and within us.
Yes.
May God us in these deliberations and everything we do from here forward. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we are called to order and we ought to say hi to Tom Gardner who's watching us on Facebook. We move now to public comments. We ask Mr. Morgan now to bring forward those speakers, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two speakers this evening. The first is Mr. Henry Powers speaking on economic development.
All right, Henry, please come forward. And as you know, we limit to around five minutes. It's not a Q and A. It's just for us to hear from you. And any follow-up can be done at a later time. Ask you to refrain from offensive remarks or attacks and just stay on the policy. Please, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd start by saying, when I was growing up as a little boy, my mom always said, "When you get in front of important people, whatever you say should come from right here." And that's exactly where I got mine, right here. But as far as being offensive, that'd be the last thing I'd come in here and do. But first of all, I want to say thank you, gentlemen, for serving your county. I appreciate every one of you, everything that you do. I know you put a lot of time in it. And I did want to share one thing on economic development. And I'm not here to criticize anything that's been done in the past, anything that's going on in the present, or criticize anything that's going on in the future. Personally, I agree with some of the things y'all did. You know, that's not a problem. Nor am I representing any group, or anyone, or any agency. And the reason I said that, because I want to mention a few people, and I'm not here on their behalf, I'm just using them as examples. But I asked myself the question, I was reading the paper one day about economic development. If I was an investor, going to spend $5 or $6 million in a town, what would I really look for as an investor? I started thinking about, I think I'd want the safest town in South Carolina. Or maybe I'd want the town that had the best recreation department, or had the best education system. Which one would I want? Which one would you want? Y'all three, good. I'd take either one of them. So my point is this, what if you could use one of these items, or anything along that line, in addition to what you're doing now, as part of your economic development plan? Other words, you could take an investment and say, "Look, I want to show you our schools." Most schools have one resource officer. Part of our economic development plan, we want three. We want two. We got the safest schools in the state of South Carolina because we make that part of our plan. And just think of an investor thinking, "My tax dollars is going to have the safest part in school?" That's, you know, that'd be pretty impressive, I think. I'd like to know that my tax money is going to increase the safety in the schools, or the best recreation, or if we had the best recreation department to bring the tournaments and stuff. I'm just saying, outside the box a little bit, maybe we could think of some ideas in addition to what you're already doing, a great job on, is maybe there is an investor that wants these things. Just think on those terms. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Henry. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have Jeff Maddox also speaking on economic development.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Mr. Jeff Maddox.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
Kershaw County is open for business. Congratulations to our economic development team for securing a wonderful new business to our county. I've been waiting for the media headline, "Economic Development is Working," but for some reason, they missed the scoop. If it were not for our outstanding team, the $17.2 million bond County Council borrowed, along with the massive pay raises for our development team, we would have never seen such investments and jobs coming to our area. It appears I was mistaken, and government incentives are essential to compete with other governments who seek the same businesses. Council was right that the only way to get business to invest is for the government to bribe them more than other governments. After all, that is the American way, right, gentlemen? What business has the economic development team and County Council brought to us, you ask? Why, the new Love's Truck Plaza, of course. You would think County Council and the economic development team would be shouting from the rooftops about their success. But wait, that was a dream. The fact is, our economic development team had nothing to do with Lowe's choosing White Pond Road, nor did the Council have to bribe them with incentives to get them to choose to invest in Kershaw County. The fact that Love is investing in the new truck stop without government handouts flies in direct contradiction with this Council's basic premise that business will not invest unless government bribes them. Gentlemen, the free market is working despite your best efforts. While this Council borrows on our children's futures and spends delude on failed central planning boondoggles, the real drivers of economic development, the entrepreneurs, are risking their own money in an effort to satisfy customers and make a profit. Love's market analysis showed them that there was a need for a truck stop to compete with the pilot on 601. Love weighed the risk and potential rewards and decided to risk their reputation and capital to fill a need and make future profits. Love's did not ask the economic development team if this was a good idea. Love's did not ask this Council to rob the people to pay for their truck stop. Love is here to make money on their investment unlike this Council. This is not how County Council does things. Council has no skin in the game, and the only thing they risk is losing an election. Those who plan this great vision are not even working in the private sector and have no way to analyze market signals, thus leading to a misallocation of resources and failure of their collective visions. How many jobs can our economic development team claim to have created over the past year? The fact is, Council spent $750,000 last year and created no jobs at all. In fact, County Council and its economic development team have created 25, I repeat, 25 jobs over the last four years while spending over $3 million. That is about $134,000 per job. That's a fine return on investment, don't you think? Will the people being forcibly robbed to build this mega site ever see a check from the county when this investment turns a profit? Of course not. The funny thing is, economic development is a government nonprofit for the benefit of big business and government. Big business gets more free stuff from government, and government gets more tax slays, which brings more money into the extortion fund. Government then cites the growth as the reason for it to spend and grow in a symbiotic relationship that benefits both entities at the expense of the people. Even the employees of the new business suffer from the higher taxes. Gentlemen, get out of the way and let the free market do what you cannot. Gentlemen, you are committing generational theft by borrowing today and forcing our children to pay later. In fact, the $17 million bond will cost our children around $32 million over the next 30 years. Quit borrowing on our children's future to create your political legacy when in reality your legacy is going to be one of failure and debt for many generations to come.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Any further, Mr. Morgan?
Nobody further, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. We'll move on to the next item, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Tucker, a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Conell. Any comments? Very good. The agenda is on the board. All those in favor of the agenda, so signify. And it's unanimous, and we move now to approval of minutes from 9:00 April. It's a tab A, and on the board. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass, second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Conell. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining.
Mr. Tucker will abstain. Very good. We move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous with Mr. Tucker abstaining, and they are approved. We move now to the first item on the agenda. We're pleased to welcome the Clemson University Extension, Mr. Ryan Bean. It's shown incorrectly on the agenda as Bean. But Ryan, you can be whoever you want to be. Welcome aboard.
That's what they told me when I was growing up, too. Look at me, I work for Clemson now.
Delighted to have you. Unlike public comments, this is for an exchange. And please, limit your remarks to somewhere shorter than 15 minutes, please, sir.
Not a problem. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm glad we were able to work out our schedule despite our differences of planning. So first of all, this time last year, David DeWitt was our county coordinator here in Kershaw County for the Extension Office. Since then, he has moved on to bigger and better things, doing specialty crops in the state, namely the hemp program. So he is tied up, as you can imagine, fielding those questions and answering any kind of issues that may come up with that new process. So my name's Ryan Bean. Like I said, I'm the new county coordinator. I've been in Kershaw County with Extension now for a little over six and a half years. Prior to that, I was with the Forestry Commission here. So I've been here for a grand total of 13 years, doing forestry outreach and education for landowners. We submitted our budget. Over the years, we have been very grateful to have support of the County Council in making things happen. We have not seen a much of an increase over that time, but in the last two years, we have had an enormous increase in number of activities, people involved, and services being offered through Extension in the county. Namely, last year, we hired a 4H agent. My name is Sarah Marsengill, who we came and presented to y'all several months ago. And if you have not seen her out in the county, your eyes must have been shut. She has been beating on doors, she has been meeting with people, she has been doing programs in schools like I have never seen before. And it's amazing to watch. The people are responding, people are always in our office asking to join 4H, and so we are looking to grow that program. And what I provided to you was our budget request. As you can see, last year, I asked each of our agents, and by the way, we have six agents that use the Kershaw County office. Myself and Sarah, the 4H agent, I'm the forestry agent, are the only two that are housed in Kershaw County. I am also an area agent, so I have five other counties that I'm responsible for. But the other thing to take note of there is that I am the only forestry agent north of 26, from Richland County all the way to the coast. So I do spend a bunch of time on the road, too. I asked all of the agents that do participate in programs here in the county to provide some kind of an idea what expenses or needs they had in the last year's timeframe since our last appropriation up until February 15th of this year. As you can see there, it's a quick rundown and totaling somewhere around $4,700 was our out-of-pocket cost to make programs happen in Kershaw County. Those are not area programs, those are actual programs in the county. And then below that, you'll see just anticipated expenditures that we forecast based on the programs that we would like to host in the county. Last time we spoke to you with Sarah being here, one of her biggest things that she was moving forward with was a shooting sports program. Y'all provided some great feedback on that, and she has really hit the ground running with that. At this particular time, she is in our FCL building next to our office, holding a meeting with around 15 volunteers, no, I'm sorry, 15 youth that are interested in participating, as well as several volunteers in the 4H shooting program. That will be a large endeavor, cost-wise, time-wise, and everything in between. As you can see there, she's listed targets, training, range time, uniforms, entry fees, and awards. All of those things will cost money. And rather than putting that on the shoulders of our youth, it'd be great if we can get some support rather than having to beat down doors constantly for sponsorships. The other thing she did last year was the annual poultry show. That was a huge success. We had people from several counties away from Kershaw County come just for that program. A lot of great awards were given out. Those people moved on to other local fairs and other local programs to do the same type of event and did well. This year, that program is expected to grow again, and you can see the cost there is somewhere around $2,200. One thing, let's move back to the shooting sports thing. Another thing that Clemson Extension is known for is utilizing our volunteers. Without volunteers, it would not happen. So one of the things that is going to take away a little bit of that cost upfront is the lawings here in Kershaw County have volunteered their property to be used as a range. And Mr. Lawing is involved with the military, so he is also very well-versed in setting up the range to specification and will help assist and volunteer to his time to make that happen. So any case, running down there, for those two programs, as well as I was forecasting two programs that I was looking to put on in the county, were tree identification programs that had been asked for by several of our forest landowners here in the county, as well as our forest herbicide workshops. We all know herbicides are always changing, the way we put them out is always changing, and that's something they constantly ask for. All of those things are a cost on us and/or the landowners that attend the programs. Total there, $59.21 is what we project to be our cost for the coming year as far as programs go. That does not take into account our office expenditures, which are shown up there at the top. So that was a reason for our increase in budget request this year. I appreciate any support you could continue to give us, and we will do our best to serve the citizens of Kershaw County.
Questions, comments? Mr. Bozard.
Yes, I want to thank you for coming, and I want to thank you for all you do. I've used some of your services in the past with farming and used Mark out of Anderson with the pecan trees, and y'all have been quite helpful. And I enjoy your breakfasts when I attend your meetings. Thank you.
You did too, right?
I did too. Yes, I did.
But anyway, y'all got a good program there. I was there when the 4H lady, it was the first night she was there, our first morning she was there, and they've got some very exciting people working for them there in the county. And I think that this is what we probably ought to help them with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bozard.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Conell?
Thanks for being here tonight. Does your group have any program that works with farmers markets? It's one of the nicer features we have in Kershaw County on the weekend. I've been attending for the past couple of weekends, and it's just awesome and it's growing. Do you team up to increase efficiency or productivity there?
I am on the farmers market board. We need to get, the Kershaw County Master Gardeners, which are an association within Clemson Extension across the state, Kershaw County Farmers, young master gardeners, do you have a booth there? They set up and answer questions throughout the day. That's our major involvement with the market. However, Sarah has mentioned several times having a booth there and setting up and trying to attract youth into the 4H program as well. But anything you've got on your mind or that you hear that we could help out with, we'd more than willing to do it.
Okay, I'll think on that. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
Hey, Mr. Bean, thanks for being here tonight and for the work that you do. A couple of questions. Would the Clemson Extension, would you guys ever, would this be within your lane to team up with the county and to help with maybe beautification projects as far as the master gardeners and intersections that are blighted and could use a green thumb?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Our, the horticulture agent that is responsible for Kershaw County is based out of Richland. She's actually a turf grass specialist, and she is in charge of the master gardener program in the county.
What's her name?
Jackie Jordan.
Jackie Jordan, all right. East Camden's got some intersections that could just use a green thumb.
We can do it.
And then as far as your shooting, your shooting experience, have you, having success teaming up with like local businesses as far as sponsorship, maybe with Hermitage or other entities that?
Sarah is, I don't remember her last conversation, but she has been, had several conversations with Hermitage. I'd have to get back with you on that.
Yeah, all right, all right, good. And perhaps, perhaps County Council, we should get a firsthand experience at this shooting that you're doing? And wouldn't that be fun? Well, at least, I'll, if you'll have me out there. Sounds like a really cool experience.
Other comments? I had a couple. You don't mention Bee's in your retinue. Are Bee's part of that, too?
Absolutely. We assist the Water Beekeeper Association.
That's an interesting thing. I mean, to go over to your several meetings, I would encourage people to go see the forestry meeting, the 4H meeting, the Bee's, which is an amazing bunch of people. But I say all that because Kershaw County, in terms of profitability in the state, is the number one most profitable county in the state for agriculture. And thanks to this body here and those of in the audience, the Vision 2030 was written to reflect part of our agricultural culture and legacy. Secondly, we're, in the United States, we're the 17th most profitable. And some of that has to do with forestry, some of that with poultry, but it's a part of what we do as stewards on Kershaw County Council with the great help that we get from Clemson University that helps us out, and the other agencies that help us. So I wanted to make sure that was understood upfront. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's Mr. Bean. Okay. All right, well, thank you for that public presentation. We move now to a proclamation. The proclamation recognizing the American Legion Post 17. It's a tab B, it's quite lengthy. I have a hard copy. I'm going to read it and read portions of it. But first, I'm going to get a glass of water because it's long. And then I'm going to ask Council to vote. So it's a proclamation recognizing American Legion Post 17 for Excellence in 2018. Whereas the American Legion Post 17 is the only post in the state of South Carolina to receive the Post Excellence Award for 2018. Now think about that. Whereas it was awarded for their involvement in such things as youth activities, and I'll cite a few that are on the proclamation. Boy State, American Legion Baseball sponsoring a Camden youth baseball team, the oratorical contest that they do annually, Boy Scouts, and JROTC. Secondly, community service. Post 17, along with Kershaw County, the city of Camden, historic Camden, and many different organizations, worked diligently for 15 months to host the Wall That Heals in Camden. Recognizing community members such as Highway Patrolmen, City Police, Kershaw County Sheriff deputies, Camden and Lugolf Fireman and Teacher of the Year, and Post 17's Honor Guard, which attends the funerals for our veterans. And they offer their facility to Camden and Kershaw County Rec Department Senior Exercise Group once a week in the summertime. And Post 17 offers its facilities at no cost as a voting precinct. Thirdly, service to troops and veterans and widows. They volunteer and operate a DAV van taking Kershaw County veterans to the VA in Columbia one day a week, and Post 17 Endowment Fund helps Post members in need. And skipping a little further down, Post 17, along with the CHC 47 and 82nd Airborne Club, conducts annually the 505th Ceremony for the Airborne Regiment, in which one of our Council members' relatives first jumped in 1943. Further along, they help in the work with the Marine Corps League, the VFW, the Lugolf Fire Department, the Highway Patrol, and the Sheriff's Department, and the Kershaw County to conduct veterans' recognition ceremonies. And also with the 9th Air Force Commander, Major General Scott Zoberst, and the Shaw Air Force Base Color Guard. Further, they recognized and discovered that a Defense Distinguished Flying Cross was not presented to one of our heroes, Captain John Bly, who participated in the bombing raids over Hanoi, and corrected the record that had been omitted for 50 years. And each Veterans Day, the Post hosts a Veteran Day Ceremony to honor all our veterans and their families, and the widows and those that died, and is attended by many veterans every year and supported by the CMA, Camden Military Academy, and our JROTC. I could go on, but I need to conclude because this list is exhaustive, and I can't believe they have been so influential as to be the post of the year for our state. Now, therefore, Kershaw County Council does hereby recognize the merits of American Legion Post 17 and commends them for their contributions to Kershaw County and its veterans this 23rd day of April. With that, can we have a motion?
Show me.
Mr. Jones?
I'll yield to Mr. Bozard.
Lead, and Mr. Bozard. Both veterans, I point out to you. We have a first and second. Are there any comments?
That was Jones and Bozard.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Bozard.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
I just want to add, I know several of the gentlemen that are part of the Post 17 here, and thank you guys for your service and really for your continued service as you keep us aware and honoring our veterans. Growing up, I grew up with American Legion Baseball, and so the American Legion does things like that. Just thank you guys so much for all that you do for the community.
You got it right.
I did. My brother played Legion ball. If they had American Legion basketball, I would have made the team, but not baseball.
All right, other comments? What an amazing thing. Mr. Jones, go ahead.
I just want to say, thank you so much. You know, the American Legion is such an important, vital part of what veterans' needs are, and I appreciate everything you guys do, and I'm proud of you and thank you for your service to our country. And words just couldn't explain how I feel. You guys are the best. Thank you.
With that, I think we can move to a vote. All those in favor of this proclamation, so signify. And it's unanimous, and if you men and ladies would come forward, I'd like to have you recognized with a photo opportunity. Please, come up. Best in agriculture, best in veterans affairs. We move on now to a series of ordinances. Item number one is the second reading of an ordinance of the County Council to rezone. It's a tab C, and it's on the board. I turn to Mr. Carpenter to introduce this at the second reading.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for second reading, an ordinance to rezone a piece of property from current RD2 to GD, general development. This is up in the Westphal area of V County. It previously passed on first reading.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Show me.
Mr. Bozard, a second.
Second.
Mr. Snodgrass, any discussion, Mr. Bozard?
Yes, thank you. It's the same people that are investing in this is local people, live up in Kershaw, and they want to put 147 camp spots there, 30 campers, excuse me, cabins, filling station, car wash, and a small strip mall in there. me, cabins, filling station, car wash, and a small strip mall in there. And it's right dead across the street from the racetrack. So these people invested some money in it. This is the second venture they've had, and we... Second?
Other comments?
Have a question.
Yeah, Ben?
The parcel that's noted is not included. Is that a primary residence? Is that the, I guess, would be the owner-operator is the idea, would live there and...
He's aware.
No, no, I understand. Is that it? He's just going to own and operate and live right next door?
Yeah, come on up, Mike, please.
The house is under separate ownership.
Okay. So a third-party owner is there and is totally fine with it?
Yes, sir. He actually came to the planning commission meeting, asked some questions, but never opposed the rezoning that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Don't know how you keep all this stuff in your head, Mike. Other comments?
One other comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was no objection to none of this. Thank you.
So with that, on second reading, I move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary. We move on to the second of three ordinances. Item number two at Tab D, and it's on the screen. Again, I ask you to introduce it for me, Mr. Carpenter.
Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you for second reading, an ordinance that will result in the extension of the operating lease between Kershaw County and the Kershaw County Equine Association for the Equine Park, for a 10-year extension.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
So may, Mr. Chairman.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, sir, from Mr. Snodgrass. Do you want to lead off, Mr. Tucker?
I just, you know, the Equine Park has been very good for not only the district that I represent, but for the county. And I think that their history has proven in the past their worth and value for this county, and look forward to continue to do business with them in the future.
Very good, sir. Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
I just wanted to point out, this, and as well as the previous ordinance that we just passed, I mean, this represents a piece of economic development that goes far beyond some sort of industry, but it is a piece that tells us that things are moving and happening. Just last weekend, I was in a local restaurant on a Friday evening, and this local restaurant was packed with horsemen and other equine industry, and they had been at the Equine Park all day and were there all weekend. And it's not uncommon, it's not uncommon for you to go into a local restaurant in Camden on a Friday or Saturday, and it'd be full of folks who have been at the Equine Park all weekend. So I think that's something that we need to be aware of, of the economic impact that happens with things like this.
Yeah, 220 horses. Somebody has to get them here. They didn't get here by themselves. Other comments? Very good. With that, I think we can move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And Mary, it's once again unanimous and moves to a third reading. Item number three is the first reading of an ordinance about a rezoning by Mr. Bach. It's at Tab E, and it's on the board. I think we see it. There's the map. And I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to introduce this one.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, for first reading tonight, you have a request to rezone approximately, to rezone four parcels on approximately 21 acres on Precipice Road. The request is to rezone it to a classification from R15 to RD1. The understanding is it is intended to be used as a venue for weddings and special events.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve on the first reading?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of this four parcels, 21 acres.
21. Mr. Tucker gave the first. Can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jones, did I do?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Comments, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, I would like to say Mr. Bach's here tonight if you have any questions for him. But thank you, Michael, for you and the Planning Commission working and getting this through to us. I think this is going to be good, once again, for our county. If you want to go out and see the facility, and he ought to be, he's very proud of what he's crafted out there and has developed. And the only thing I will forewarn you when you go out there, take a lunch, because Randall likes to keep you, he says one more thing, one more thing, about 100 more times. But this place out there is very beautiful, and it deserves your attention. And I think this is going to bring some beautiful weddings and receptions and things, and picture, photo-taking out to that area of the county, but for everyone in Kershaw County to enjoy it.
Mr. Bozard?
Yes. I did receive a call from one of his neighbors, and they are excited about him getting this done. They think it's good for the community. Now, that's going to get my vote. Yes, thank you.
Very good. Other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Conell?
Just a question. I just want to make sure this zoning, and I'm sure y'all have researched it, is not too restrictive. Is it really just going to be limited to weddings and receptions? Because some of the other event spaces in Kershaw County that have developed have morphed into other things as well. For example, this Sunday, you have the Lookoff Eldred Wrestling Banquet, where all the high schools and middle schools get together at Rock Bottom Pond. And I don't know that that was originally intended as a wedding-only or wedding-reception-type space, but do you envision it going anywhere else?
Randy, if you could come up. And after he finishes on that line, I was going to ask Mr. Conley to talk a little bit about what this zoning means. Go ahead, Randy, please.
Well, the planning commission had mentioned in the meeting, it's a residential place, and RD1 would allow other things, but it's set up, it's residential, so it wouldn't go, you know, beyond some of the other things that RD1 would allow.
Okay.
You know, because it's set up, you know, with the ponds and the house, set up residential.
So it's the best you can get. All right.
Yeah.
Can we ask Mr. Conley to talk a little bit about that question at the heart of the matter, which is, it's not restrictive, it's rezoned, so he could use it for what things?
Sure. We've worked with Mr. Bach on a law for this, and our original intent was to try to do maybe a special use permit for just the weddings that were coming through. But he was putting a substantial amount of money into the property for the use, and he's done a good job. And he just wanted more assurance that it was going to be able to be continued that way, because that was going to be a little bit of us just working with him to try to get that done. So in our ordinance, we're a little bit strong with to meet the ordinance, the only way that we have a use for a wedding reception venue is under our bed and breakfast ordinance. They wrote it in there as such, if you want a wedding venue, it could come under the bed and breakfast venue. Bed and breakfast venues can only be in certain zoning districts, and RD1 is one of those particular zoning districts. So I mean, it was just a way to work with Mr. Bach, just right there.
Yeah. Well, I just raised the point to say, don't be surprised when you host one or two weddings there, and people love it, and then they're knocking on your door for all kinds of other events, because there's market demand in Kershaw County due to event space.
And we agree with him. We think it would be a great asset.
So you just, you might have to address it in the future somehow. I don't know how.
Okay, Randy. Mr. Tucker?
This is for Michael. So this begs back to the question. What if, once this is approved, he does have Camden Lugol North Central High School team that want to hold the banquet there? Can he do it? Or is there another rezoning he has to do, is my question. I'm going to make sure I'm clear.
No, I mean, I don't think he would have to go to a... I mean, I think that's a, you know, sort of the other venues that are doing it, they're set up in similar fashion. If it became a much demand that we felt that we needed to go back through a ordinance and sort of modernize it to meet some of these needs, we can do so. But I think it would be accessory use to the venue itself. I mean, I wouldn't see that being a...
I mean, the only risk is it would give a, another use might give basis for someone else to raise a complaint. If nobody complains, then no problem.
Correct. We hope so, sir.
Other comments?
We don't complain out in that neck of the woods.
Yeah. Mr. Jones?
I would just like to say, I've known Randy pretty much all his life, when he was a young fella. And Randy, you've done a good job. I'm proud of you, the work you've done. Your place is beautiful. I think this is going to be a tremendous asset to Kershaw County. I think it's something that needed. Rock Bottom has been a tremendous asset over on the west side, and I think this is going to be the same here. So thank you so much for doing this. I think it's going to be a win-win, and I support you on this.
Other comments? I think we can move to a vote on the first reading. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and passes. Thank you, Mr. Bach. Appreciate it, sir. We move on now to new business, a discussion and possible vote on public comments in council. And we have no references, but we'll let Mr. Jones introduce the topic. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion. We have a discussion, possible vote on public comments.
I'll give you a second for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion, and then that means if we do a vote, then we'll move to that point. Go ahead, Mr. Jones, sir.
Well, do we need to take a vote? No, let me, you want to go ahead and speak?
We're in discussion now.
I'm sorry, we are. I apologize. You know, I want to keep it simple. I really want to get the people more involved into our county council meetings. And I know there's been some times and places that we've had different events go on here, and we've had a large number of folks come in. We have 30 minutes that is allowed now. Of course, that time is divided, and when it's divided, if you have 15 people, then they get two minutes apiece. I had two issues in mind that I wanted to discuss with you folks. One, I was very interested in the possibility of having a second public speaking at the end of the new business. I brought that up last year. It did fail. What I think I want to do tonight, for your consideration, I would like to see that if there's 15 or more people, it would go to 45 minutes. I think that would show to the folks in our community that we do care about their being able to get involved and communicate to us and work with us, you know, when we have issues going on that really draw a lot of interest in county council. And I will say this, I like the fact that we've gotten a little bit more liberal with our public speaking by letting people finish out. And I thank the chairman of this council for that. That's a pretty important thing to me. But that would be something that I would like to see passed tonight, is that we go with 15 or more individuals, 45 minutes, which would be three minutes apiece. And if you say, as we are now, as 15 people, it'd be 30 minutes, about two minutes apiece. So that's something that I'm interested in. And I'm not going to bring up the second meeting tonight, or the second public speaking session tonight.
All right. Do you want to, other discussion, or do you want to frame the motion?
Well, I mean, if you...
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Before the motion's framed, I guess. So in my experience so far, whenever there is a large group of people on a very, you know, controversial topic, they tend to coalesce around one or two people that end up speaking about that particular issue. And actually, I've seen it happen before, where, say, you had 10 people that were signed up on a particular topic. They'll realize that they're, and it's not true every time, but they're all saying very similar things. And you can kind of see them talk amongst themselves and say, you know what, carry out these last three points. And they'll get up there, and four or five people who had their names on there will kind of wave off and say, you know, my points have been covered already. Have you seen that happen before?
I've seen that happen. I've also seen it happen where we've had 15 people in here, and they only got two minutes apiece. All I want to do, all I'm concerned in, is just giving the public a little bit more time if there's a larger group in here. That's what I'd like to see this council support.
Other discussion?
Do we know, I don't know if we keep their records of public comment. When was the last time we had more than 15 people sign up? And how frequently do we have it? Do we have, would anybody know or educated guess? Is that something that happens often? And, Mr. Jones, I, you know, obviously, you know, I have a lot of respect for you, and I know that if anyone wants to be a voice for the people, I mean, we all want to be a voice for the people, but I know particularly that that's something that's dear to you. I would like to recognize or let everyone know that the way government, the way our government works, anything major that comes before council, there's ample time for you to speak into that, because everything takes three readings, and before the third reading, there's public comment, I mean, a public hearing, excuse me. And in that public hearing, that public hearing actually goes a step further beyond just public comment. It takes, it goes into where there can be Q and A interaction between the desk and between those who are giving public comment. Furthermore, our numbers, there is no more accessible government than local government. There's just seven of us up here. Our cell phone numbers, our emails are listed on the county website. If there's something that you want to talk about, you, all you got to do is pick up a phone and give me a call. And I'll give everyone this promise, if you call me and you want my time, if you give me 24 hours at least, I will schedule you into my schedule, and I will meet with you, and probably even sooner than that. But I will, I will give you, you know, 30 minutes or maybe even more, depending on what the issue is, if you want to talk about something. There's been many times with public comment that I wanted to tell folks, hey, I appreciate you commenting on that, but if you'd have gave me a buzz yet last night or last week, you know, I would have been more than happy and more than willing to help you out and to give you a better understanding on some of the situation. So, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Jones, but at the same time, wouldn't you, would you, would you agree that there is maybe some ample time to give? I mean, because we have, there is public hearing, anytime we pass the ordinance, there is public hearing. So would you say that's not enough?
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Mr. Snodgrass, let me address that. Absolutely. I think we work hard to try to give the people a voice. However, what I'm uncomfortable with, and if it doesn't happen as often as if we want to play that scenario, then what would it hurt? What is it going to hurt? What is it going to harm to say, look, if there's 15 or more people, we're going to go to 45 minutes, which would guarantee three minutes apiece. And of course, as it is now, 30 minutes, it's only two minutes apiece. I mean, what is it going to hurt?
Yeah, that's true. And I'll be honest with you, I'm actually more comfortable with what you're saying now than I am opening up a whole nother section of public comment.
I understand.
You know, I will, I will say that. I'm, that's definitely, I'm more open-minded to that than I am giving a whole nother public comment section at the end of it.
Mr. Snodgrass, if I may, that's one reason I decided not to go through with the second meeting. I'm not trying to grandstand or make council have to vote against something that they're uncomfortable voting against. I really legitimately feel this is the right thing to do, and it's just extending a hand out there saying, look, we care about what you have to say. And if there's a large crowd here, and I've been here 13 years, and Vice Chairman Tucker knows as well as I do, we've had quite a few times that there has been large groups here, and they've been cut down to 30 seconds. I mean, this happened. And it may not, it may not happen for six months. It may happen within the next six weeks. We just don't ever know. But what I would like to ask you to do is consider going from the 30 minutes to 45 minutes, if it's 15 or more. Now, you stay with your 30 minutes, but if it's 15 or more, we go to 45 minutes, which would just be three minutes apiece for each individual to get up and speak.
15 is a threshold in which it changes.
Let me invoke some rules here. It has to be recognized, and then, so we can keep this thing contained. Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, I yield back my time. I was just asking questions to the one who made the motion.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I really don't think there's anything wrong with us having some dialogue with each other if we're open for discussion and not have to deliver, go through the chairman every time. I mean, due respect.
Go ahead, please.
But anyway, that would be my motion.
Okay.
If, I want to give everybody a chance to speak before I make a motion.
Yeah. There may be other discussion points. Mr. Conell, Mr. Bozard, Sammy?
I'm listening.
All right, good. Go ahead and frame it formally, and then we'll put it, make a motion, and I'll ask for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take our public speaking, and it stays at 30 minutes. However, if there's 15 or more individuals to sign up on the list, it would go to 45 minutes, and that would be three minutes apiece.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
From Mr. Snodgrass. Any further discussion? All right, we can move to a vote. All those in favor of that motion signify by raising your hand. Mr. Jones and Mr. Snodgrass. All those opposed signify. And that's Mr. Tucker, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell, and the motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. That was well stated, sir. We move now to council briefing, starting with Mr. Bozard.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I've been traveling the county quite a bit lately. And I want to thank the Clean Community Committee. They have tried to save some money. They're making their own little do-not-litter signs and putting them up all over the county. And I want to thank that committee publicly for what they're doing. I've been up 97. I've seen them. I've been up Highway 5 where I live. I've seen them. I've been on 1 coming into town, and I see them. I just want to say thank you to the Clean Community Committee. And secondly, I'm sad to say that the, I thought we had it worked out with the Sparkleberry Committee for the fair, that we was going to get it to come to Kershaw County. They had the land, it was, they had used, they had plenty of land that was going to be used. And at their last committee... last committee meeting last week, my chairman called me last Friday and said that the committee voted, if they couldn't keep it in Richland County, they would do away with the fair. So the fair is a thing of the past and what a lot of people don't know is, in that Friday and Saturday, they took in over $100,000 in two days. And that's, all that money went to the schools. So that was a pretty good loss to the school system, whether it been in Kershaw County or Richland County. And like I say, that was a sad situation. If y'all were watching the news, Friday, no, excuse me, Monday night, they had a big thing on Channel 19 about the Sparkleberry Fair and the fact that last year was their last fair. But anyway, that includes my.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Conell?
Yes, sir. Just one thing. May 4th, we've got the Elgin Podunk Parade coming up, starts at 10 a.m. It's a great family-friendly event. If you have the opportunity to go out, there's typically some good food over at Potter Park afterwards and my kids always have a great time. We'll be out there. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Jones?
Just one thing very quickly, Mr. Chairman, and thank you and members of council for the time to speak. May 4th also, the Black Belt Hall of Fame for South Carolina is going to be hosting and inducting Tom Mulligan into their organization. And I would just like to say congratulations to Mr. Tom Mulligan, well deserved and what an asset he'll be to the Black Belt Hall of Fame. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snodgrass?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council, this may get mentioned again, but I do want to remind people that this Friday is the Special Olympics out of Camden Military Academy. What a great, great organization and just if there's anyone listening who's going to be attending that, that event, please know that you can, there's a, there's a great church right across the street from CMA and you can use that for overflow parking. We utilize that every year and just want to remind people that, please, 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 if you need parking or more parking, you can park across the street there. Also, Thursday, May 2nd, we'll have National Day of Prayer at the courthouse at noon. Reverend Marion Bennett of Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church will be our keynote speaker, but we will have a National Day of Prayer recognition at the courthouse on May 2nd at noon and would encourage, encourage everyone to come and to be out and offer prayer for not just our local government, but also prayer for our nation. That concludes my remarks.
Mr. Tucker?
I'll report.
Very good. This county punches above its weight. Everyone here knows that. The All-American County isn't just one signal. We got a fishing rodeo, we got a wrestling supper coming up, we've got Special Olympics. It's just, goes on and on what this county can do. It's just amazing. We have just finished, second point, we just finished our, our second budget session. I thank the staff for some terrific work, squeezing every penny till it screamed, I think that was the word that Mr. Tucker used. And I would publicly thank Sandra and Vic and the team for pulling off a very, very coherent, issue-based process. Not easy to do and it was done with class. Lastly, I'm going to embarrass my brother, it's the first time he's ever seen me in this environment. He's 70 years old and I want to tell you, he's, Mr. Bach, he is no less rigorous in housing inspections to the city of Kansas.
Today's birthday.
Yeah. I just want you to know, I hit him too hard when he was five years old and never recovered. With that, I go to Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, just a few items for you. Mr. Bach, Ms. Jones says he's known you since you were a child. You don't look that old. Want to remind council that our next budget workshop will be next Tuesday, the 30th, downstairs, again, starting at 8 o'clock, biscuits at 7:30. Everyone is obviously welcome, encouraged to come. Would also like to ask Mr. Conely to introduce Mr. Joey Adams-Rukowski, our new planning zoning manager.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Yeah, I want to introduce our new planning manager, Joey Rukowski. He has come from us from Lake St. County, B-way of Chester, or excuse me, Sumter. He lives out in Chesfield County. He's a great addition to our team, very knowledgeable, very professional and has done a wonderful job and we've gotten a lot of compliments on him already. So we're very lucky and very fortunate to have him and I think he looks forward to working with our council and making Kershaw County a better place to live.
I'm glad you found heaven.
Welcome.
That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
I'll report, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, tell Mr. DeBoz not to come back.
If we can find him.
I see no need for an executive session and I'll take a motion to adjourn from Mr. Tucker. A second from Mr. Bozard, any discussion? With that, there is none. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand and it's unanimous and good night, Tom.